Hey there, it's Jeremiah. A quick message before the show. Thank you all for listening to the neoliberal podcast. If you'd like to support the podcast, you can do so by going to patreon.com/neoliberalproject. Patrons get access to bonus episodes that are patron exclusive, our sticker of the month club, and they get access to our community Slack, where you can hang out with like-minded people and discuss politics, economics, world events, and more. Become a patron today at patreon.com/neoliberalproject. And enjoy the episode. Welcome everyone to another episode of the neoliberal podcast, part of the Progressive Policy Institute. I'm your host Jeremiah Johnson. And joining us today are three people who helped make the recall the school board effort in San Francisco possible. Joining us today is Stephen Bus. He's a director at Grow SF, and he's also the founder of Yembi Neoliberal, also based in San Francisco. Also joining us today are Autumn Loyan and Shiva Raj, who are the essentially the leaders and the founders of this recall effort in San Francisco. And that's the topic for today's podcast is the San Francisco School Board and the school system there. What was happening that made it necessary to recall some members of the school board? How that process went? And what it all means in the end? So Autumn and Shiva and Stephen, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
So I guess we'll just start with the basics. There's some people who are probably more familiar with this and some people who might be less familiar with it. And some people who may have not heard of this at all. So can we talk about from the beginning of the pandemic, really? And if it stretches back even further than that, then certainly we can go back as far as we need to. But from the beginning of the pandemic, what was happening with San Francisco schools? Can you walk me through when you first started to be dissatisfied with what was happening? Because you're all San Francisco residents. Why, why was this such a big issue? When did you first notice that there was things that needed to be corrected here?
So we got first involved or first started to pay attention in Jan 2021, which of course well into the pandemic. And San Francisco schools had been closed since March 2020, which is when, you know, the city went into an emergency. And, you know, Autumn and me moved into San Francisco in December 2020. So we were new to this, new to town. I lived here before, but, you know, we decided to move in together. And we were living in other parts of the Bay Area. And we were kind of like not particularly enthused by living together in, by the idea of living together either in Los Altos or Pleasantville, which is where we lived before. Yeah. And so we, we moved in in December, just before like the latest lockdown happened in, in California. And the school district, San Francisco school district, had passed a resolution in October 2020, saying that schools will be reopened in Jan 2021. Right? And that was kind of like tracking with many of the other school districts in the Bay Area. So I certainly didn't expect it to go very different from what was in that resolution. But come Jan 2021, I get this email from the school district. And, you know, two, I have two kids in the school district. My oldest son is in high school and my youngest is in elementary. And the email, you know, but it's somewhere in the bottom of the email is a bullet point that says, "Midland High School kids will not go back to school that academic year."
And that's kind of our wait, what moment?
Just, just one bullet point this was announced in?
That's right. And, you know, my older guy had struggled quite a bit with distance learning. You know, the first few months of distance learning, obviously, you know, we all like, you know, said, hey, this is, we have to do this, right? Because this is, we didn't know what the pandemic was. It certainly seemed the right thing to do. And it was really, you know, amazing to see people come together and make that possible. Right? The tech, the support, the philanthropic money that went providing devices, all of that, right? Cities came together to make this happen. This is amazing. But as, you know, time went on, especially in the new academic year, September 2021, he was really struggling, you know? He went from being an honor student to being rock bottom in terms of his grades. He's, and more importantly, he was mentally kind of struggling. He was borderline depressed, barely getting out of bed, you know, eating two meals a day. And so I was really, really hoping for him to get back into some sort of in-person learning as soon as would be possible. So that's why this was even more troubling.
And so when we saw that, we're like, someone has to get these schools open.
Right. And Autumn's kids, in the meantime, you know, her kids still continue to go to Los Altos because she has split custody. And her kids had a very different experience.
Yeah, my kids, as soon as they went back to school, they were a million times happier. They were back to their normal selves. And so to see Shiva's kids still struggling when I knew it could be fixed just by opening the schools, you know, it was frustrating to see that like every day in our own home.
I think this is an interesting point because I know this, I relate to the governor's race in Virginia, where schools were a big issue. And for a lot of people in the national media, they wanted to make it about like, oh, schools doing critical race theory. And it's this very culture war kind of thing. But if you actually ask the people in Virginia, the biggest thing that they were concerned about is our kids need to be back in school. They need to be in person. That's a big deal. Would you say the same dynamic is true here? That is it both culture war stuff and in-person learning? Or is it just really we've got to be focused on? It's just the in-person learning was really the dominant issue?
I mean, foundationally, it was in-person learning was the dominant issue. That's what brought so many of us out from, you know, just being regular parents into kind of, you know, standing up, paying attention to what is happening in the school board, and then advocating for our kids.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing like, something like that happens in your own home every day that's driving you nuts, that's, you know, not working for you to, to get you passionate about fixing something. And, you know, parents will step in front of a bus for their kids. And I thought that was just a figure of speech until I had kids. And then I'm like, oh no, it's actually true. And so when you have like that level of commitment to someone or something, you know, when, when something is, when the schools were not opening and you could see your kids suffer, you were like motivated to move mountains to get them the help they needed.
Right. And then, you know, more importantly, in San Francisco, especially we could see the disparity in terms of how our kids were, you know, what our kids were experiencing versus kids across the Bay Area. Right? The rest of the Bay Area had very similar issues, right? Very similar COVID prevalence. In fact, San Francisco did better than most other parts of the country, even within the Bay Area. It was amongst, had some of the lowest COVID prevalence rates. Right? And, you know, many school districts were able to bring their kids back in October 2020 when, you know, the health, you know, the health guidance permitted them to. San Francisco didn't. Because, you know, those school districts that managed to do that, did the work in the summer of 2020 to make that possible. San Francisco, on the other hand, turned into the school board, turned down a reopening consultant that the school district came up with, you know, with all kinds of made up reasons why they didn't want to hire this person. They didn't come up with an alternative. There was grant money that would have paid for this person, and that didn't happen. And therefore, you know, at that point, the superintendent who, you know, is on the record saying, if you don't hire this person, it'll be a body blow to our efforts to get school sites ready for reopening. And that turned out to be true.
Stephen, I've got a question I'd love to throw in your direction because I know you've spent a lot of time in, in San Francisco's local political scene over the last few years. What was the reasoning here for why they did not reopen the schools? Because I assume it's not done out of malice. You know, they're not trying to be evil or anything like that. Like as much as we would prefer our enemies to be like cartoon villains, they're not, they, they have some kind of justification. But what are the justifications that at least supposedly are being used that were the reason that the schools didn't open? What's the internal logic there, even if we might disagree with it?
The internal logic of the school board, if I could frame it most charitably, was that they just simply did not believe that any kind of in-person activity was safe. I don't know what they truly believe in their heart of hearts. But that could at least explain some of their behavior.
And is this, is this just the school board itself? Or is, are there pressure groups also advocating for this? Is there like, is the teachers' union involved? I'm curious if there's like other kind of political entities that are in play here.
Absolutely, the teachers' union was a huge pressure group. The San Francisco Teachers Union, or UESF, United Educators of San Francisco, is one of the most influential political groups in the city. And they were using, you know, if, if I want to go away from my charitable interpretation now, they were using COVID as a leverage point to get higher wages and better benefits for teachers. So they were fine just keeping teachers out of the classroom and making students suffer in order to have more negotiating leverage. Right? Throughout the whole COVID pandemic, we saw very, very low incidence of COVID transmission among children. And I think, I'm not personally aware of any deaths among children, school-aged children. And so to me, there is no logical justification to keep kids out of school other than some kind of selfish motivation to get something for the union. And I think what is, what is really stark is what Autumn and Shiva were just talking about, about kids in other districts going back to school. That was also true for private schools in San Francisco. So at the same time that public schools were all shut and teachers were demanding more exactions from the city and claiming that it wasn't safe, at the very same time, all of the private schools were open and kids were back in, in person. And I have to look at that and it's hard for me to give a charitable justification for the behavior of the school board and the teachers' union when there was no indication to me that it was dangerous.
And Autumn and Shiva, I'd also love your take on this. There's, when you make a decision like this, right? There's a cost and there's a benefit. There's a risk and there's a reward. And you have to do that calculus in your head. And do you think the costs or the benefits are, are more important here? Does one outweigh the other? So when you think about that, costs versus benefits, what do you think are the, the risks that potentially could be taken? And are they serious to reopen the schools? And what are the benefits? Or to phrase it another way, what are the costs of not reopening the schools?
Yeah, so I think when COVID hit, there were a lot of people who were scared. You know, it's something we haven't seen before. And in a lot of, and, you know, people have very valid reasons to be scared. They're, you know, maybe they have family members at home who are more susceptible to COVID. Maybe they have, you know, maybe they've personally known someone who died from it or whatever. And so it's natural to be scared in these situations. I think other districts did a much better job managing that fear, giving teachers options to work remotely with students who also needed to learn remotely or be in person, depending on what worked best for our family. And I think our school district kind of failed to make both those paths available to people. So I think a lot of this wasn't necessarily a cost benefit analysis so much as it was a decision that they made out of fear. And without, because if they'd done a cost benefit analysis, they would have seen that COVID was not really being transmitted in schools, not by children, especially at the beginning of the pandemic. They would have seen that the mental health effects on children were pretty severe. I mean, not a single school child in San Francisco has died of COVID. And yet, at the same time, the emergency rooms were flooded with kids attempting suicide. So it's, you know, if you're, if you're, you can't, COVID doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? You have to look at the, at the costs of the isolation on children, not just their social development, but there's actually like, kids were actually putting their health and their lives at risk.
And, you know, it also meant that the kids were already disadvantaged. Distance learning wasn't a great solution. It was okay for a few months, but it didn't really help address, it didn't really give the same kind of education that you would get in an in-person situation. So the, and the kids who were already struggling were the ones who fell the fastest behind. By October 2020, the school district had data showing that, you know, Black, Latino, and Pacific Islander students were actually had some of the highest learning loss when it came to math and reading skills. English language learners and this large English language learner community in San Francisco, which is of course, you know, full of immigrants from, you know, various different parts of the world. They suffered quite a bit. Kids with special education needs suffered, right? Many of the other school districts in the Bay Area brought back small cohorts of kids. Even when the school sites were overall shut, they still brought back small cohorts, special education, kids with learning disabilities, kids who were really generally falling behind in distance learning. Not San Francisco. San Francisco, again, was an exception, that it did not even bring back kids who had some of the highest needs.
And the thing that kills me about this is, you know, it's the, the kids who are failing are the kids who maybe don't have the best wifi at home, kids whose parents are essential workers. They're out there keeping society running so the rest of us can sit at home on our laptops, right? And so we're failing their children. And not only are they falling behind at higher rates, but it's going to be harder for them to catch up because they just don't have the support at home that wealthier families have.
Exactly. I mean, you know, it's interesting, we, you know, we, you know, here's a school board that talks about social justice like 300 times a second, right? But I didn't actually seem to care about the actual incredible negative effects this was having on really the kids and the families who could least afford to have those effects on them. Right? This is going to handicap those kids for the rest of their lives. And yet, the, the school board members didn't seem to care about those effects.
Yeah, I mean, it makes me, it makes me wonder, like, when we're thinking about how to serve the goals of social justice, what is it that we can do that is going to change the arc of people's lives? Is it changing the street signs, change the school names so it gives them something to aspire to? Or is it making sure they can read, making sure they can do math, so that they can go out and get a good job and be kind of a beacon to the kids who are coming up behind them?
Right. In many respects, what this recall was, was really raising the question about what does it mean to be a progressive city? What does that mean? Is it, does it mean that we focus on symbolic stuff? Or does it mean that we focus on doing the practical things that actually make the biggest impact on the lives and the educational outcomes of our children?
Well, so something you've mentioned right there is the symbolic gestures. And there was something that happened in San Francisco that trickled its way into the national media. I think this happens a lot with certain cities in the United States. If you're in New York, or if you're in San Francisco, or a couple other places, sometimes your local issues end up exploding. And then you'll see it on CNN and Fox News and everywhere. And what happened in San Francisco, as I understand it, is there was an effort to rename a bunch of schools and other, maybe even other things, but it's schools certainly, from figures who are deemed to be problematic or, or not, not good anymore. I hesitate to use the word canceled because I think it's kind of a dumb word sometimes. But, but is that, is that basically what happened? And, and was that a big factor here? Or was that more like a minor factor? How would you rate the importance of the big scandal about should we rename the schools or not?
I think that was the thing that everyone in the community had heard about since it got so much publicity. And so when we went to talk to people on the street to gather their signatures, that was kind of our entry point for talking with them about the problems. Because everyone had heard that they'd renamed the schools. And, you know, it was also something that really hit the alumni community hard. There are a lot of people who have strong ties to the schools. And for the school names to be changed in a way, in a process that felt very ad hoc, not consulting with historians and making sure they had their facts right. You know, it, when the name changes, it's, it's kind of severing their connection to the school a little bit because it changes the experience of the people, kind of the next generations who go through the school after them, right? And I don't think there was enough time and attention paid to listening to and honoring those feelings. And so I think that community felt like kind of the rug had been yanked out from under them in a place where, you know, a lot of SF natives will say, hey, you know, what high school did you go to? Right? It's, it's something that's very, very meaningful. And so for those names to change, it, it meant something to them, right?
Yeah, and, you know, it's like your house is on fire and you call the fire, fire guys in the fire department. The fire engine turns up. And instead of, you know, hosing down that fire, they start to like repaint your house. That's, you know, just the absurdity of it. It was just extraordinary. And I just, you know, at a right at a time when you're struggling and suffering, we log into these school board meetings and we have to wait seven hours to talk about reopening, which is like the burning priority. And here's the school district wasting its time talking about renaming and a whole bunch of other things. So it just illustrated how, how little the priorities of our kids and our education and families actually mattered to the school board. They were so disconnected from it.
Something you mentioned earlier is how easily noticeable this was. Because after all, your children are now at home, they're doing school at home. And it really makes me think about, you know, the political issues that we care about. There's a lot of things people say they care about, but there's usually only a few things that are really salient in their mind, that they, they're thinking about front of their mind all the time. Those are the issues that can really drive people. And it certainly seems to me that if your kid is now doing, you know, homework in the living room at noon, and they're taking classes from the couch every single day, and, and it's disrupting your everyday routine, that certainly would be really, really front of mind, really salient. So you said that the first time you noticed this and, and you started to really be concerned was January 2021, with that announcement that there would be no in-person school for the rest of the year, or the rest of the school year at least. When did you move from, I'm very concerned about this, into, we need to recall the school board? How did that process happen, moving from just concern to action?
Well, I think first we just assumed that it was a normal school board. And you, you know, you call into some board meetings and you say, hey, we're really concerned about this. Please get the schools open, and they do it, right? So we tried that. We tried sending-
Oh, 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 oh. I, I don't want to say you are naive.
We totally were.
But as, as you were saying that, I was just thinking, oh, no.
Yeah, I mean, the difference, and I think that is what also was strikingly obvious, that, you know, we both interacted with school districts, our own school districts in the Bay Area, under similar conditions, and never did we feel like they were not making a good faith effort to bring kids back. I mean, we could see them struggling with kind of the challenge of like safe reopening and making sure they follow the guidelines and also making sure the kids are not being left behind, et cetera, et cetera. Right? But San Francisco, the disparity again was so striking. I mean, they would run these seven to nine hour long board meetings, right? And you're calling in, I remember, you know, late Jan, there was this meeting where they were talking about the renaming resolution. Early Feb, they were pushing to change Lowell, which was a merit-based schools admission. And they spent two hours, you know, you know, ridiculing a gay dad who had, you know, volunteered to, to sit on a half-empty, all-female parent advisory council, right? And they spent, you know, they spent two hours doing that and they just tossed his candidacy out, saying that he was not diverse enough. It's just the insanity of it was just, this unbelievable. And very quickly, we appreciated that these guys are not actually, you know, they have this wall of indifference. They're treating parents literally as the enemy.
So the more we saw of them, the more we're like, oh, maybe we, and then we're like, maybe we should pressure them. So we, we worked with another group called Decreasing the Distance. They, Shiva became part of their group. He was helping them like show graphs that San Francisco had the best COVID control in the nation and yet was among the slowest school districts to reopen. And that got some press. And then we were like, maybe the city just needs to see how bad it is, right? Because we're all behind closed doors. People who aren't parents don't really get what it's like to do online schools. So we had this wonderful protest called the Zoom Out Protest that had kids doing their Zoom school right in front of their schools. And the media showed up, the TV cameras loved it, they got a ton of press, and absolutely no movement from the school board. So we were sitting there going, what more could we possibly do?
Yeah, and, you know, right then, we heard about this other school district in the Bay Area, which had a similar situation in San Ramon in the East Bay. And, you know, they were supposed to reopen schools in Jan, they didn't really have much of a plan. And someone in the community launched a recall. And two weeks later, there's 23,000 kids back in school. And I'm like, all right, this is what we need to do.
We'll do this recall thing and two weeks later, all the kids will be back in school. It was a little naive.
So this was something where you ideally didn't even want to have to do the recall. It was just, maybe, maybe we'll do this and they'll get back in school and we can drop it. And it'll be, you know, as long as we get kids back in school, that's basically what we need. Was that the thinking?
It was, because so many people had told us it was impossible to get a recall, even on the ballot in San Francisco, much less passed. And so we're like, okay, we're going to do this thing because someone needs to do it. And maybe it'll end up to be one of those things where you win without winning, where it doesn't make the ballot, but it puts enough pressure on them that the schools reopen, or something like that.
So as this happened, what, when did you actually initiate the formal process of we'd like, we were working towards a recall? Is that a couple of months after January or what?
No, middle of Feb.
It was on Valentine's Day, actually.
That's when Autumn first came up with the idea. And then, you know, but we spoke to a whole bunch of people. And, you know, there was people, there were people talking about doing recalls, but each, each person we would approach would then say, you know, it, it, we would figure out, we would realize that they were not serious about it, or that they thought it was impossible and didn't want to move forward. And we were like, this has got to move forward now. And so we ended up, you know, going ahead and filing the paperwork. And at that point, we really didn't have a community or any particular idea that this would be successful. We just said, felt like it had to be done. It's not something we wanted to do. I mean, we were building an app then, which we had to then, you know, shut down. That is not what we moved to San Francisco to do.
And remember, we'd been here only two months at that point and we knew practically no one. So we were not intending to be the people who ran the recall because other people like had resources and had connections and-
Yeah. I mean, I'd lived in San Francisco before 2018, but like most people in tech, you know, I didn't really pay much attention to what was happening at the local level in politics. I mean, I was completely, you know, not knowledgeable about that at all.
When Autumn and Shiva were, were having these conversations, I remember I had, I'd spoken to a number of people that I know in, let's call it the democratic establishment in San Francisco. And all of them to, without exception, said, oh, no, it's not, it's never going to happen. Recalls are impossible, there's no way they're going to do it. And as, you know, as someone who was very angry at the school board for their sheer incompetence, I, I kind of refused to listen to, to the establishment. And so then, I think, I'm, I'm not sure exactly when Autumn and Shiva and I connected. It was, it might've been March, I want to say. Or maybe right after they filed in February. But I talked to them and I was like, all right, absolutely. I want to make, I want to help make this happen. And I was, I would say I was unsuccessful convincing the establishment to embrace it at that point. But as time went on and they got closer to, to meeting their, their goals of fundraising and signature collection, that's when people who had previously said, oh, this is impossible and we're not going to help. That's when they were like, oh, oh, okay, I guess we'll, we'll chime in now and say we support it.
Yeah, that was the next thing I wanted to ask about was how the political process of this went. Not, not literally the step by step, but more, when did it start to seem like there was momentum? Because the story that you're telling me now is at the beginning, everybody thinks it's impossible, nobody thinks you should do it or you should attempt it. The end of the story is that seven, what is it, 78% or something like that?
Yeah, about 78, 78%, I think recalled Allison Collins and Fauga Maliga, which got the fewest recall votes, was around 69%.
Okay, so yeah, it's, 70 to 75% maybe on average, ended up voting in favor of the recall. So what happened in between now and then? How did, how did you win the public? And I'm wondering were there specific groups that like ended up crossing over and saying, you know what? No, we do support this actually, we've changed our minds. I'm curious about that process.
So for us, it all started with a Facebook group and a mailing list. We, since we didn't know anyone, we were like, we're going to run this thing through a Facebook group and anyone who wants to help can help. So we announced our, that we were running the recall on a blog. And we're like, maybe 200, 300 people sign up for our mailing list and help us out. Well, it turned out by the end of the week, we had 8,000 people on our mailing list and we had a Facebook group with over a thousand people in it, all of them wanting to help and make this happen.
In fact, the, the first week actually took us by surprise. And we've, we, you know, we knew that there was, there were a lot of frustrated parents, but it was just clearly took us by surprise to see how many people were interested in helping with the campaign. So very quickly, we had a household of people who were eager and willing to help. And, you know, we had to put them to work, basically. So-
Was that surprising to you, how much, how much it got?
I mean, it, it took us by surprise at that point. I mean, that is not the numbers we had in mind. I mean, when we launched, we, we published in a local blog written by, you know, someone who's, who's associated with Stephen, Joel Engadio, who was, you know, has been a journalist in the past and has stood for election and is, you know, somewhat familiar with kind of the politics landscape. So he runs this group, I mean, he runs this thing called SF Politics 101, which is like a 30-minute session. And that is really all the introduction to politics we had. And Joel is really good, by the way, in terms of kind of laying out the land, landscape of what happens. And so, yeah, and then, and, you know, we had very quickly a lot of media interest as well. And, you know, so I think all the people who were really motivated about this issue seemed to have heard about this, got to hear about it really quickly. And there's clearly a lot of frustration. It was just that, in fact, you know, looking back, they were actually, people way more frustrated than us about this issue. It's just that they had not, for many reasons, decided not to step in and do it. Others had also kind of explored the idea. You know, many were just intimidated by like the political environment in San Francisco. So, and, you know, maybe we were naive and knew, or maybe we were just like, you know, we have to do this for our kids and we just didn't, you know, have firsthand experience of how intimidating, intimidating it might be. So, but whatever be the reason, we just decided we had to do it and we stepped in.
By the end of it, you saw people like London Breed, mayor of San Francisco, saying that she basically endorsed the recall, that she supported this effort. I'm curious how, maybe Stephen, you have some insight into this. How did the establishment end up getting behind it? Was it just a case of seeing the amount of energy and then being like, well, I guess I better put my, I better put my bet on the winning horse, kind of?
Yeah, fundamentally, politicians love to get at the front of a- Yeah, fundamentally politicians love to get at the front of a parade, but they don't like to build it themselves. So they saw this incredible movement that Autumn and Shiva were building. And when it became clear that it was going to make it to the ballot and win, because everyone knew it was going to win once it hit the ballot. So once it was clear it was going to qualify, that's when the politicians started to throw their hat in the ring and really get behind it. Uh, but they really were not helpful until that was clear. Um, I remember when Autumn and Shiva were collecting signatures, they were on a really good uh, clip. They were collecting tons and tons of signatures from volunteers, which is, on the one hand, or fir- first of all, just completely unheard of. You cannot collect that many signatures with volunteer effort. No one thought it was possible. But because it was such a motivating and salient issue for parents, you had people showing up every day to collect signatures. But um, it was clear when there was about three or four weeks left, that we weren't quite gonna make it. And talking to some political allies of mine, they said like, well, we don't want to, we don't want to raise money, we don't want to donate to help them collect signatures because we just think they're not gonna make it. And I was like, no, that's, that's insane. So then my, my co-founder and I at Grow SF, we launched a fundraising matching campaign to help close some of that budget gap. And we did up raising, I think, about a hundred thousand dollars to pay for signature gatherers to, to, to make sure that we did hit the eighty thousand or so signatures that we needed. Um, but, but yeah, no one, no one wanted to help until they knew it was a sure thing.
Eighty thousand signatures in a single city is, is a lot. That's a high bar to clear.
Yeah, I mean, the, the threshold in San Francisco is, is you have to get fifty-one thousand, three twenty-five valid signatures, which is ten percent of the registered voters in the city within roughly, you know, in just about five months. That's the timeline. I mean, in, in comparison, California, for example, like when the new summary call qualified, their threshold was much lower. Um, it was, it, it's set on the basis of how many people voted in that previous election. But it ends up being about six percent or so of registered voters. And they got twice the amount of time because, you know, they, they went to the, went to court and they got an extension because of the pandemic.
Yeah, we didn't have that. But you always need to have a buffer above the number of valid signatures, uh, because some of those signatures aren't gonna validate. And actually, Stephen wrote this amazing software for helping us validate the signatures. And we had, you know, we had interns like validating signatures, like especially in the last couple of weeks, we, our house was packed with interns.
I mean, we, basically the first twenty-four thousand signatures, as Stephen pointed out, we were all volunteer signatures. And volunteers were getting really good, uh, and people were basically walking up to sign. We didn't have to convince people, right? Uh, but they could only be, you know, volunteers were mostly parents and they could only be out for like a few hours on the weekend. And that, that itself was a lot of time to ask for, for people who were like the most slammed by the pandemic, right?
Yeah, so in the end, in the end, we did have to go for paid signature gatherers. And that's because they can actually stand out in a street corner and collect signatures for eight hours straight. So it, they're available for people who want to sign. And I think um, having collected signatures myself now, I know like after three hours, I'm like totally exhausted. So I have the utmost respect for the people who are doing the signature gathering, who do that work every day. It is. Yeah, it is hard.
And you know, in terms of funding, early on, pretty much all our money came from small donors, right? And so the first like few hundred people who donated were all small donors who were donating, you know, nine, nine dollars and so on. And then we opened up uh, a donation limits and, you know, to raise more money. And then even at that point, most of the checks that were coming in were still small checks. Uh, it's only as, you know, as it seemed like we were getting closer to that number. Uh, and right around the time, I think in July or something, Chronicle published this opinion poll that was run in May, showing that, you know, the school board had seventy-one percent disapproval and only ten percent approved. And that helped to get some, you know, make, make it easier for people to appreciate that, hey, if he just got on the ballot, we would win.
And did, did you feel that early on? Did you feel that the real, the real obstacle was just, we have to get on the ballot? And I'm sure we're gonna win if we can just do that.
Oh yeah, a hundred percent. I mean, the, we, you know, when we were collecting signatures, people would come to us and thank us for doing this. Right? The mood in the street was extremely supportive. Uh, there is a real disconnect, I think, you know, now looking back, I think there's a real disconnect in San Francisco between the political class and the people. The people are very united and they were very united in booting out the school board. The political class tends to be a little divided because, you know, obviously people have loyalties to some of these elected leaders and therefore they tend to put that personal tribal loyalty ahead of their, you know, job to serve the people they were elected to serve. So, but yeah, the people were united. We had strong positive response, right, from day one.
Yeah, and the interesting thing to me was, it wasn't just us noticing that. When we brought in the paid signature gatherers, they're, they're looking at us and going, people are thanking us for doing that. You know, for, for being out there collecting signatures for this issue. They're like, this never happens. And so that was really the very best sign we saw that this was gonna pass.
Right. And you know, some of its success came from a uh, social media campaign we ran in March called Thirty Reasons to Recall the School Board. Maybe literally, you know, we had these seven hundred volunteers in, in that Facebook group. And in panel, we were kind of doing the legal work to get uh, get, you know, get to the point where we got the approval to collect signatures, right? So uh, but yeah, the social media campaign really, what it did was systematically kind of dissect everything the school board had done or not done over the last like six months to a year. And we were trawling through board meetings, transcripts, blog posts, tweets, et cetera, et cetera, to be able to lay out exactly the, you know, the thirty different ways in which they had failed.
And it was, it was a very data-driven campaign.
Exactly.
Very, like very factual, very, you know, hey, we're running this one hundred and twenty-five million dollar annual deficit. You know, that's not a good thing. The state's about to, to step in and take over our finances and that's not normal.
Yeah, and we can't, you know, we talked about the deficit. We talked about, you know, the, the Lowell merit-based uh, school being, uh, its admission policy being changed in five days without getting parental, you know, or community input. We talked about, you know, the reopening delays, et cetera, et cetera. So kind of systematically went through all the different issues that um, the school district, uh, school board had created. Um, and so, and I think that seemed to have laid the groundwork. And if, of course, as part of that campaign, we also um, you know, published some of the tweets that one of the school board members had written a few years ago, um, which were, you know, showed pretty deep-seated bias against Asian Americans. Um, and so it's Collins and they choose, you know, calling Asian Americans by super messes and, you know, saying, and you know, and so on and so forth.
It's, it's interesting because this whole thing started with schools open versus schools closed. But it, you know, things grow out of our control sometimes and it, it grew to become something else. And I, I think that leads me into my next question, which is that, you know, when this happened and you were successful, people across the country took notice. And it sparked a debate about what this meant, but you, both for San Francisco and for the country at large. There's one camp of people that says, this is, this is, shows you something about Democratic Party politics. It shows you something about progressive politics. And there's, there's really an ideological problem here with what the San Francisco school board does. They have an ideological issue that needs to be fixed. There's another camp that says, it's not so much ideology as just are they competent or not? This is a local issue and they were just broadly incompetent at their jobs. And they're not good people and they deserve to be recalled for that. But you know, the whole thing about ideology and this means something for the Democratic Party, that's all nonsense. I'm curious what your point of view is. I, I'll open this up to the whole group. Is this an important ideological thing the Democratic Party needs to notice? Or is this just a local competent government issue?
I think it's a bit of both. So I think that the ideology is getting in the way of people making good decisions. So for example, if, if, if Allison Collins had just resigned or if they had just reversed their decisions, if they had just focused on what was important, if they had shown basic competence or responsibility, none of this would have gone forward. Cause all we wanted at the beginning was just kids back in school. But it, it is indicative of a political class that is so disconnected from the average person in San Francisco that they did none of those things. To them, their ideology informed their decisions to say that the most important thing that we could do while school, schools were closed in the pandemic, is not to make a safe plan to reopen, but to rename the schools. Because the people who they're named after are problematic, you know, people like Abraham Lincoln and Dianne Feinstein. We couldn't let that stand.
Well, look, I have my issues with Dianne Feinstein, but I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to cancel her out here, you know?
Uh, you know, it's interesting actually, looking at the takes. I know if you guys have ever, um, I know if you guys have heard this ancient Indian parable called the four blind men and the elephant, right? And you know, this, this elephant walking down the street and these four blind men chance upon it and one goes to the side of the elephant. And they've never, you know, touched an elephant before, so they don't know what it looks like or feels like. And so, you know, one of them goes up to the side and he touches it and he says, hey, elephant's like a wall. And the other one goes up to the trunk and he pulls on the trunk and he says, elephant's like a snake. Another one pulls on the ear and he says, elephant's like a fan. So, so that's great. You know, there's, so, so there's some, so, you know, I think many of the takes kind of represent where people are coming from. Um, and I think the core of it, at the foundation of it, right? What we heard on the streets from the people signing these petitions, from the people who walked up to us when you were doing the canvassing, is that this real sense that the government, you know, the school board especially is failing to get the basics right. It's not focusing on education. It's not doing the things that these people were elected to do, right? And it's, you know, and it's of, of course, you know, doing a lot of symbolic stuff that everyone has an opinion on, but foundationally, they were not focusing on doing, getting the basics right. You know, we have a social contract under which any government functions, right? You're like, if you're elected representative, you're elected to serve the people you were elected to serve. And your job is to focus on doing that well, right? You know, if you got elected, you, you know, it, it means that people were broadly okay with your ideology. But it doesn't mean that you can ignore doing the job you were elected to. There's a contract there. You have to do the job. Right? And here are our children who are going to be permanently handicapped if you don't actually put the effort into educating them. And so it is, at the core of it, is this failure in kind of the social contract between the elected representative and the people they were elected to serve.
I'd also say it has to do with, it doesn't have to do with there being anything wrong with the goals or the underlying values that these school board members had, but a very severe disagreement with how you make it to those goals. You know, if we're looking for uh, equity, for better opportunities for kids who are underprivileged, how is the best way to approach that? Are we going to rename the schools and call it done? Or are we going to make sure those kids can read? Right? Personally, I don't think there's, there's um, that changing the name about the schoolhouse door with no conversation with that community is nearly as important as making sure the kids inside those walls can read and do math. And hopefully codes, they can go out and, you know, get a good job and make change in the world.
Yeah, and you know, that was, that was something that we heard from, you know, parents in every part of the city, from every ethnicity, from every social class. There was a uniformity in terms of desire for the school board to focus on educating the kids, right? I mean, I, right as part of this new superintendent survey, that they actually ran a survey of all the parents. And every parent crew, black parents, Latino parents, Asian parents, white parents, everyone was saying exactly the same thing. The dissatisfaction for the school board was coalescing around this idea that they had not focused on educating the kids.
I think those are such incredible and important points. Uh, the, there's certainly a frustration uh, among both parents and even in people in the Democratic Party politics uh, around the structure of the school board. So the way politicians have been using the school board has been as a stepping stone, a jumping off point to higher office. So we've been electing people who have no interest in education or schools or good execution of, of administration. All they care about is their personal political careers. And therefore we get people who will get elected, do performative politics and not ensure that our kids go to, get a good education. Cause all they want to do is run for the next office. We've had, I think, eight different city supervisors who have used the Board of Supervisors as a springboard. And I know that Allison Collins, Gabriela Lopez and Fauga Maliga were all planning on running for higher office. So the fact that we have stood up and said, no, you can't use this office as a jumping off point. You have to care about kids. You have to bring some basic competence to the job is going to really totally change how politicians engage with the school board and with just general Democratic Party politics.
And I think that's a great thing that uh, basic competence is now kind of being seen as, you know, one of the requirements for your job, like that if you're going to move up in, um, if you're going to use the school board as a stepping stone, that first you gotta be competent and show that you're running the school as well. And then we'll give you something bigger to run.
Yeah, and I think the other thing also that this is kind of uh, showing is that there is a gen, you know, this was a revolution for good governance. It's a revolution for kind of the most boring things on the planet, like run your um, board meetings well, right? Focus on the right priorities, right? Give the right, uh, communicate well to your team, which is in the school district. Set them up uh, for success. Communicate well to the parents in the community that you're elected to serve, right? Take, you know, listen to them truly and faithfully and reflect their needs and their desires in your plans and not just impose your ideas and desires onto them just because you want to use that to create controversy and, you know, get on to your next job. I mean, I've seen this play happen multiple times in India, right? We've gone through this whole decolonization and social justice process multiple times. The Chennai bus service was renamed four times.
I am, you know, it's, it's funny you say, it's funny you say that, Shiva, because I am planning an episode right now in the future on um, liberalism in India, I'm calling it. We do, we do episodes a lot like, like this a lot. Liberalism in Brazil, liberalism in, in Catalonia and different places in the world. And thinking about Indian politics gives me a headache, is all I will say.
Oh yeah, and you know, for me, it's a real heartache because, you know, I've seen my country taken over by Hindu nationalists, right? And how did they succeed and come into power? They came on the platform of governance. When the Bharatiya Janata Party, which is the Hindu nationalist organization, won elections, it came on the platform of good governance because the left and the center had completely failed to focus on and deliver good governance.
There's a parallel here because you said the left, you know, which maybe means Congress in India, the Congress party, that failed at good governance. And you could make the same argument about San Francisco, you know, you, you and Autumn were both trending towards the point that really this is just, we want them to just be competent. You almost, nobody's gonna care what your ideology is as long as you get the basic things right. Is there a reason why, especially in San Francisco, which look is, it's the most left-leaning city in the country? The polit, every politician there starts at the center-left and only moves left from there. Is there a reason why this was such an issue in San Francisco specifically that just the basics weren't getting done?
That's a good question.
And I mean, I, I will be, I'll be honest in that I am center to center-left. And it would delight me if you would say, oh yes, well, the left is always just bad at this because the left is terrible. And like, that's, I'm biased. I, I will totally admit that. But it, but honestly, I wonder, do you think it's a factor or is it just, it, it really doesn't matter as much as just getting the basics right? And then the political spectrum doesn't matter as much?
I mean, our community actually spanned the entire spectrum of political thought in San Francisco, right? We have people from every end of the political spectrum in San Francisco participating in this effort, you know, doing like critical work, sometimes anonymously, you know, even when their organizations were officially opposed to us. Like Bernie Kratz is a great example, though they were officially opposed to that. They're some of the most ardent supporters of the school board. But yet there were many Bernie Kratz who signed this petition, many who volunteered anonymously to make this possible, right? So, so we saw this coming together across the political spectrum on something that is foundational for everyone.
So the question I'll answer is, why is it that SF politics is so dysfunctional? Jeremiah, can you, can you uh, repeat the question?
Yeah, just why is it that, you know, it, it, I guess my question is this. San Francisco is the most left-leaning city in the country. That's, that's a pretty standard fact. Everybody accepts this. Is that related to San Francisco's basic competency being so bad in things like the school board?
That's a really interesting question, which I will try to answer as charitably as possible. Um, I'll try to leave some of my biases uh, on, behind. So I don't think that the left has a fundamental bias against competence. But I do think a, a couple of things have happened uh, that have led to San Francisco electing generally incompetent people. Uh, number one, the nationalization of politics and the progressive label and Bernie Sanders calling himself a democratic socialist. Those three things have allowed people who call themselves progressive to establish a firm hold on power and not just on current elected positions, but they have taken over the local Democratic Party. And they have, they are now controlling the whole pipeline up to higher office. So the, these people who call themselves progressive are the same people who have just uh, defunded our advanced placement school, uh, Lowell High School. They are killing advanced placement classes. They killed eighth grade algebra, so you can only take algebra in high school now. And you know, I took algebra in seventh grade. There's no reason to make people to. There's no reason to make people to wait for ninth grade. That's insanity.
That's kind of crazy.
Right. And, and so you've got people with real retrograde beliefs who are able to latch on to the nationalization of politics and say, "I'm a progressive, and if you, if you like national progressive movement, you're gonna like me." So they're experts at controlling the narrative.
So they say that they're progressive because, "Well, I want Medicare for All." Knowing that they're a local school board member. It doesn't matter whether they want Medicare for All. And so you're saying they get the label of progressive without their local actions matching that reality?
That's 100% correct. And it's one, it's one reason that I have, I no longer call myself a progressive, right? When I moved to San Francisco in 2016, I really strongly identified as a progressive. And as I learned more about San Francisco local politics, I realized that the people who call themselves progressives are DSA people who want to dismantle capitalism and who, they're NIMBYs who don't want the city to change. They are people who don't believe in merit. They are just fundamentally, I don't like to call them conservative. I call them preservative because they want to anchor San Francisco in the past. They want to preserve what's here, and they don't want anything to change. And if you advocate for change, they will slander you. You know, I don't know how many times Autumn and Shiva were called "secret Republican," you know, "shills." And the whole thing was financed by evil, right-wing billionaires. Like, that's their only defense because they, they don't have facts on their side. So they just slander people.
Yeah, actually, that's one of the things I, I kind of like. Whenever I see them slandering us, I'm like, "Ah, you ran out of good arguments, didn't you?"
I'd say the other thing that also like explains why it happened in San Francisco is Asian Americans.
Oh, absolutely. It would not be possible without the Asian American community here.
Exactly. Because, you know, it's, you know, I think we have one of the highest percentages of Asian Americans anywhere in the country. In the Bay Area, overall, probably has about similar levels of Asian Americans, 30 to 34%. In San Francisco, it's almost like 38% or 39% of the population is Asian American. Asian Americans are the single largest group in the school system, the public school system, right? Almost 39% of the kids are, and, you know, then there's white, and then there's Latino is the second biggest population, and then black kids. So, and, you know, and I think, you know, obviously, Asian Americans are like very heterogeneous group. You know, they have actually some of the highest heterogeneity in the country across like different ethnic groups in terms of income, in terms of country of origin, et cetera, et cetera, just kind of their lived experience before, you know, migrating to the United States. But I think there is, if there is one common thread that unites all of these disparate groups is their desire to have a good education, right? Education is the one thing that unites, you know, this entire very disparate, very heterogeneous community who generally kind of, you know, come here often with very little, you know, escaping and fleeing from countries which are dysfunctional. And, you know, in India, we have a democracy, but it's a flawed democracy. You know, we elect these people, they know nothing. And so you're used to constantly seeing government failure, used to constantly seeing that the, the political system failed to actually do the work it was meant to be, meant to do. And you come into America hoping that it's going to be different. And then suddenly, you know, you wake up one morning and realize San Francisco is headed down the exact same path that you escaped from, right? And, and I think, you know, people sometimes tend to label them as conservative. Actually, it's not true. It's not a political desire. It is actually very much a governance-focused, pragmatic orientation that the Asian American community has, which is, you know, generally, they don't get involved in politics very much. And immigrants generally don't get involved in politics. And, and so for them to get involved, it's something that really threatens their primary foundational values.
And one of the things that I've heard is that specifically closing the elite school was seen as a real blow and almost like a strike at the Asian American community. Or at least it was perceived that way. Is that true?
Yeah, absolutely. There are a lot of families who come to San Francisco, who live in Chinatown in these one-room apartments. You're talking about an entire family living in one room with no connections, probably don't speak English well. They have, you know, not a lot of money. Their children's only chance for a good future is to get a great education and go out and make something of themselves. So they have to work their butts off. And so you have kids who have spent their entire childhood working their butts off to try to get into Lowell. And suddenly, in just five days, it was ganked away from them. And now they don't know what the path is to even a decent middle-class life for their kids.
Right, and, you know, so from, right from day one, when we started the campaign, Asian Americans, especially the Chinese American community, which is the single largest Asian American community in San Francisco. And of course, it's been here for like, you know, hundreds of years, right? And so is a very essential part of the city, but really is not like participated fully in, let's say, the political process in the city and made itself heard. And suddenly is realizing that, you know, the things that they care about are actually being yanked away and taken away. And they're not getting the chance to even weigh in on these critical decisions that matter to them, right? And so Chinese American Democratic Club, which is one of the oldest democratic clubs, Chinese democratic clubs in the country, I think, was one of our earliest supporters. You know, their volunteers played a crucial role during the signature gathering phase. We had almost by the end of the phase, 100 people who spoke Cantonese and Mandarin collecting signatures across the country, across the city.
Yeah, I don't think there has been a Chinese language signature gathering effort in this city before.
Yeah, not this large, I think, from what I've heard. And, you know, roughly one-third of the total signatures we got came from, you know, the efforts of that group. And of course, that's continued all the way through. And that, that only grew in strength and size as we approached the election.
So we're coming up on time. I'm gonna ask one more question. And I guess that question is, where do we go from here? Because it, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were successful in recalling three of the school board members, but there are still four other members who I believe were not recalled. Is that correct? Do I have the facts there right?
That's right.
So at this point in time, there's, you know, is there still an issue? Has the school board kind of relented after they saw the overwhelming numbers here? Or, or has, I'm guessing, how much change has happened? And what's the plan for the, for the future? Do we need recalls again in the future? Are you planning for the, the next election? Where does this movement go?
So right now, we are getting better candidates on the school board. We're running an open process to suggest candidates to the mayor, who's the person who makes the final decision. As far as the parts of the school board that remain, I, I don't honestly expect them to change who they are or how they operate. Some of them, I think, are doing a good job, and some of them are not. But that's, whether, whether we run another recall for them is really gonna be up to our community. We're gonna go back to that Facebook group and ask them, "Hey, who, you know, who, if anyone, do you want to recall? Do you think that's the best use of our time in the next, in the coming months?"
Yeah, and I think, you know, moving forward from here, and, you know, there's a lot of, the school district has multiple crises that's to deal with. It has, it has the accumulated two years of learning loss and mental health issues that affect our kids. There's a, we all see a fiscal deficit that's leading to cuts across the board. You know, there's a superintendent that has to be hired right now, you know, and we need to bring families back and enrollment is dropped. So there's so many crises that needs to be, that they need to deal with. So the next year is going to be a challenging year for the school district, regardless of who's on that board, to deal with all the stuff that hasn't been dealt with so far. And so I think it's important for the community to stay engaged, you know, and, you know, we certainly personally don't know what we have to do. I mean, we have to go back to like, you know, we've been all volunteer, taken a year off work. And, you know, so it's not something we can sustain forever. But we also think it's important that this, we find some ways to institutionalize this community engagement. In the end, foundationally, this is a revolution in democracy, right? The people rising up and saying, you know, "These, these elected leaders have failed at the job, and we are going to hold them accountable." That's essentially what has happened.
Yeah, it certainly would be a shame if this all lost momentum just because you had to go back to work, you know, and, and you don't want it, you don't want it to disappear, the energy and the movement.
Exactly.
And I think especially what has been so gratifying is to see people from across, you know, Stephen will probably have better insight on this. But, you know, we heard, you know, San Francisco politics, a knife fight in a phone booth, and everyone's tribal, and everybody's divided into all these little groups, right? We might be 86% democratic, but it doesn't feel that way in the city, right? Politics is very brutal.